14331811 regarding potential real estate acquisition. Regarding parcels 0711407, 071147A, 0711407B, 07111034, 0711033, and 07060070, and 0706009. Okay, can I get a motion to go into closed session?
I'll give a motion to go into closed session.
All in favor? unanimous. So we're ready to go. Tuesday, October the 25th. If we'll all stand for the pledge of allegiance. Captain James Lees, how about it for a cap?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll remain standing for a moment of silence, please. You may be seated. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. And also, let's see, read you the upcoming town programs and events, excuse me, for November and December. Car show Saturday, November the 5th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in downtown Indian Trail. That ought to be a lot of fun, and Abbey has two, I just learned today, two cars in there, so hey, anxious to see that. Veterans Day ceremony Friday, November the 11th at 11:00 a.m. at the Indian Trail Town Hall right here. Hope everybody can make it. Winterfest and tree lighting this year we're doing at Friday, December 2nd from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Chestnut Park. Instead of going after the, after we normally do the parade and then having the festivities, it's gonna be on two separate days. So this will be the festivities on December the 2nd. And then the Christmas parade is Sunday, December 4th, of course, in downtown Indian Trail, and hopefully everybody can make that. So look forward to seeing everybody and hope you all will be there. Next, we have, we've got a proclamation here that I'm gonna read to the town of Indian Trail. Whereas the town council of the town of Indian Trail, North Carolina celebrates small local businesses and recognizes the contributions they make to the town's economy and its communities. Whereas the United States Small Business Administration, SBA, shares numerous statistics on the importance of small businesses in America and their role in providing employment for many people. Whereas SBA reports the following. There are 32.5 million small businesses across the nation. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Since 1995, small businesses across the nation are responsible for 62% of the new jobs created, and small businesses employ 47% of the employees in our workforce. Whereas a recent survey found the following. 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting small businesses and their community on Small Business Saturday. 70% of the focus of this day makes them want to encourage others to shop small. Independently owned retailers and 66% report that day makes them want to shop small all year long. Whereas nearly 59% of all shoppers reported they're either shopped online or were patrons of small restaurant, bar, or cafe on Small Business Saturday in 2021. Whereas the town of Indian Trail, North Carolina, supports its local businesses and recognizes that they are vital to supporting the local economy in that they create jobs, bolster the economy, and help preserve the culture and character of the town. Groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday and Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, David Cone, Mayor of Indian Trail, North Carolina proclaim November 26, 2022, as Small Business Saturday and encourage all residents of the town and across the country to participate in supporting small businesses on this day and throughout the year. In testimony whereof, I hereunto set my hand and calls the athletes of Great Seal of Town of Indian Trail on the 13th day of July 2021. Okay. Brings us to agenda, agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions? Okay, can I get a motion for the agenda? Somebody wanna make a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, presentation. I think they go out of order and do the, now we have the, I did go out of order, didn't he? Why didn't somebody tell me I did that?
Just I did your turn.
That's good. Somebody speak up, man. Hey, hey Cone, you did it, you did it at the wrong place. It's okay. All right, so is that why nobody said anything when I said motion to approve the agenda? Okay, all right, no, I can laugh about it. Small Business Saturday we did. New employee recognition, Ms. Warner's not here, so Mr. McLaurin's gonna do it for us.
I'm not Carrie Warner. Carrie Warner had a family matter. She needed her attention. She couldn't be here tonight. She wished she could because she would've been very excited to introduce four new hires for the town of Indian Trail. Two of them are here, and I will call their names, and two of them are not here. And once we've introduced you to all four employees, if the two that are here would like to say a few words, that would be fine, too. Our first employee is Nick Broninger. Did I pronounce it right, Nick? I've been trying all afternoon. He is in the Park and Rec team as the events coordinator. Nick graduated from the University of Radford with a degree in Parks and Tourism. He was most recently employed by the City of Jacksonville, North Carolina Parks and Recreation for 16 years, where he served in several roles. The most recent one being the Citywide Services Special Events Supervisor. He's recently located his family to Indian Trail and is off to a great start, and he had a chance to participate in Spooktacular. Our next employee is Haley Vaughn, who joined the Planning Department as the Administrative Assistant. She recently graduated from Wingate University with a BA in Political Science. She is a native Union County resident and passionate about government and her community. She grew up in Marshville and most recently worked in the Union County Judicial Center as a Deputy Clerk of Court. Not present tonight is Christian Almeida, who is also in the Planning Department as the Code Enforcement Officer. Christian graduated from UNC Charlotte with a BA in Psychology, and he lives in Stallins and is originally from Miami, Florida. And finally, last but not least, is Caleb Holder, who joined the Public Works Department, and he works in our Parks and Grounds Maintenance as a maintenance technician. He previously worked in the Providence Country Club doing golf course landscaping. He grew up in Indian Trail and is a graduate, Mr. McIntyre, of Porter Ridge High School. We're very excited about that, and Mr. Mayor, if either of these two employees would like to offer a few words, I'm sure that the council would appreciate that.
That's right. Does anybody wanna speak?
Thank you.
Neither?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Nick Broninger, is it?
Yes, sir.
You're from, you went to Radford University?
Correct.
In Virginia?
Yes, sir.
So are you from that area?
I am from all over the place. I come from, sorry. I was born and raised in Cincinnati, Ohio. All my relatives live there. Dad moved us down to Waynesboro, Virginia first, and then we moved up to Winchester, Virginia.
Ah.
And so, yeah, I'm more, I guess now I'm more North Carolina than I am Virginia, but Virginia's where I spent most of my life.
So the reason I ask that question, right? I have a friend, a neighbor, a very good friend of mine who went to Radford, graduated from there. And I have a son going to EMU down in, in Bridge, 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 what's his name? I can't remember the name of the town. But I went to Winchester. I think that's where, there's a university there. Can't remember the name of it. But that's what, when you say Winchester, that's really close up to the, near the border, right there.
Yes, it's northern, northern Virginia.
Yeah, so I always see Radford going up. But welcome to the town. Nice to have you here.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the town taking time and allowing me, or taking the, I don't know what to say, the opportunity to come here and bring some good ideas and stuff to the town. Family took time, really thought about where you wanna live, and this, you know, areas where we kind of settled on. I got family in Georgia and hers in Virginia, so it's nice in the middle for us, but it's also a smaller community that where we both feel kind of more comfortable at. And, you know, being in Jacksonville or in Camp Lejeune, it's every two, three years, people are moving and leaving. So this is a chance for us to have stability, you know, in work and in friends and families. So we're excited to call this home from now on, so.
I misspoke. My son is actually in Harrisonburg.
Harrisburg, oh, JMU, JMU, yes, sir.
He's at EMU.
EMU, okay.
Yeah, right, right. But welcome. Nice to have you here.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, Nick, welcome. I'm from Middletown, Ohio, 20 minutes north of Cincinnati. I'm a Bengals fan. It'd be good if you were to.
I am, anything, I joke with, anything higher, anything above, I joke, anything above Columbus is a different state.
Abbey's a Clevelander.
Yeah, that's, that's a whole, that's a whole difference. Columbus is like the halfway point. Anything above that's, they're a whole different state. I appreciate it.
Welcome, sir. I met you the other night. Good to have you.
Thank you for allowing me time to speak.
And Mr. Mayor, just one more thing. Haley, you're a Wingate graduate. Welcome. I'm also a Wingate graduate, got my masters from Wingate, but happy to have you here in the town.
I thought that was an all-girls school. I'm sorry. I hope you didn't drink the water at Camp Lejeune.
No, we were all crazy.
Just a public comment, and we don't have any public comments, correct, tonight? So we'll just move on down to Captain James.
I'll be very brief. It's been a very good month. I don't have a report for you tonight based off of last month, but the, would like to give a shout to everybody who participated in Spooktacular. That always is, that was the very first event that I got to witness when I came to Indian Trail three years ago, and it's gotten bigger every time we've done it. And I don't know how Hayden does it and how he pulls it off, but it, like I told some of you, I don't care if I see another hot dog for another year. But I'll be back next year to cook. So, but I'd be glad to take any questions if you have anything about, anything that's going on.
The rabies clinic is coming.
Be here Saturday morning.
Be here Saturday.
Union Prep.
Union Prep.
Correct me on the times, Mr. Abbey, 9 to 12?
9 to 1.
9 to 1.
Okay, yeah. Little Joe T. will be there.
Just a question real quick. The, thank you, QT, did the victim survive that?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay, good, good.
Yes, and suspect was charged.
Yeah, I just wanna, does anybody else have any questions? Just wanna thank you for your hard work out there at the Spooktacular the other day. You and Johnny Blyke cooked a lot of hot dogs. And, and I just wanna say this, too. It was for a great cause.
It sure was.
It really was. I sold at least a couple thousand hot dogs, which, by the way, were donated. They're, they didn't cost anything. But all the proceeds that you guys worked so hard to do out there the other day go to...
Going to buy toys.
Yeah, goes to...
$2,700.
$2,700 worth of toys that are gonna go to, you know, underprivileged children, which is like six truckloads. And people, people don't really realize what, what you guys do other than, you know, write tickets and do stuff like that, but you do a lot for the community. And also, a big shout out to the Rotary Club, too, because they work very hard with those hot dogs, and they did a fantastic job. And I'm just so, it makes me just so proud to be part of this town, unlike, I think, a lot of other towns in what they do. So, and I ended up staying till 9 o'clock that night. I wasn't gonna, I wasn't going to, but I really had a good time handing out candy to the kids. They were, they were fantastic, but...
That's, and I, y'all know me, and I'm, I'll, anywhere this, where we're involved and the interaction with the kids and we're giving candy and able to talk to them and have that interaction to where it's not the police in the community, it's actually the community. But we're gonna be there, and I'm gonna have my people there. So the, you plug Johnny B., and we ran our mouth just as much as we flipped hot dogs. I wouldn't really call that work, so, but it was, we had a ball.
And you enjoy it, too.
Oh, we did.
And you enjoy helping, helping, and it shows. And I just wanted to thank you, so.
Well, thank you. I appreciate everybody coming that did.
Okay, thank you.
All right, y'all have a good night.
All right. That brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? Unanimous. Brings us to public hearings. Ms. Deese.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our first public hearing for tonight is municipal code amendment, MC 2022-0106. This amendment will actually prohibit open burning for land clearing, which is currently permitted. The town has not had an open burn for a construction site until many, for many years, until recently. This burn brought quite a few complaints and concerns, and staff felt proposing a change was warranted. This change will protect property owners from potential damage to their property, eliminates air quality concerns, and reduces staff time for monitoring and filtering calls and complaints. The best part, we can still have our smores over the fire pit. Outdoor cooking, fires used for human warmth and other recreational purposes will still be permitted. So we'll take a look at the actual language here. You can see that it's striking through A. I did have a discussion with our Public Works Director, Mr. McLam, and he was comfortable with the right-of-way language that you see in there. We used to maintain right-of-ways, if you remember a long time ago in North Carolina, by burning. That's no longer done, so that, that doesn't affect. He was okay with us striking through that. And then, just to give you an idea, I wanted to provide a few photos. Probably can't see it quite as well on the big screen, but this is the actual 42 acres that was cleared by open burning. And you can see a little bit of soot and ashes on the car hood and on the lawn furniture. So I think when folks get a project that's approved surrounding them, a lot of times they're not excited about the project as it is. So they're definitely less tolerant of dealing with the effects of an open burn. And that's all I have before you for this one. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, let's first, we'll open and close public comments, because I don't think we have anybody to... No, we don't have anybody that's gonna speak. So can I get a motion to open and close public comments?
I give a motion to open and close public comments.
All in favor? Unanimous. Now, anybody have any questions? Okay, go ahead.
What is the, so, in a case like this, we have unincorporated property within the town limits, right? What is the county's policy? Any idea on the burning? Would the, would our change here be contradictory to what the county would allow?
Sure. So everyone got involved on this situation, from the Fire Marshal to the Fire Chief, to the Captain, Code Enforcement. A lot of resources were consumed on this particular fire. And one, one thing that we did gain from it is that we all agreed, specifically the Fire Marshal, Mr. Regoli, is pursuing this same type amendment in Union County unincorporated, so he was happy to see that we were doing the same. He's had a couple of examples of commercial sites in, in unincorporated areas that, that were very, very difficult to deal with, such as this one. So he's completely on board with this change for the town.
Any other questions?
I will add, I did speak with both, both of the Fire Chiefs as well to make them aware, and they were fine with this amendment.
Very good. If there's no more questions, annex ordinance number 166, can I get a motion? I'm sorry.
We need to make a motion on approving this.
Well, we did, okay, go ahead. I thought you said annexation 66.
No, I need to make a motion to approve the amended ordinance number 22 regarding open burning.
I'm sorry, I did say the wrong one. So, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, now that brings us to annex, excuse me, annexation request 166. Randy, you wanna, you wanna...
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our second public hearing for tonight is the property at 5915 Stockbridge Drive. This is a request for an annexation and for town council to designate a zoning designation as required by law. Fire Safe Detection is located at 5915 Stockbridge Drive and is currently located in Union County unincorporated. The current Union County zoning is Highway Commercial, and the proposed zoning is Indian Trail Regional Business District, which we feel aligns closely with what's surrounding and, and the county's zoning designation that's on the property currently. Here is an aerial map of the property, highlighted in yellow. The parcel to the south in the cul-de-sac, a little hard to see, but this little parcel right here is currently owned by Fire Safe Detection as well, and the company wishes to expand onto this parcel to the south, which is already located in Indian Trail. However, it would be difficult for the property owner to meet two different sets of regulations, the counties and the towns. Bringing the business into the town limits will avoid confusion and allow one set of regulations for them to adhere to. So they were willing to voluntarily annex to complete this expansion. This is a photo of the existing site. Here we've got the zoning displayed, and the darker purplish is the RBD, Indian Trail, and then the lighter purple color is the Union County zoning. The future land use displays, sets out this area to be business or office, which is consistent with this request. Give me just one second. I'm missing here the consistency findings. So the proposed zoning map amendment's consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan, economic development goal number one, land use and housing goal number one, and land use and housing goal number six. This rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the comp plan in the areas of economic development and land use and housing. And so your first step, of course, is gonna be the annexation, and then following that, the zoning map amendment. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Mr. Barber.
Yes, sir.
For all the other parcels on Stockbridge Drive and Indian Trail?
Let's go back and look at those. No, so everything in that light purple there is Union County. We did send notices, hoping someone else would take us up on the offer, but we didn't, we didn't get any other offers for now, for the time being.
Owner of Star Produce across the street there told me he thinks he's in Indian Trail, right?
So directly across from Safe Fire, like in this area?
I don't know if that's, maybe he's on the other side of Stockbridge, I don't know.
You gotta turn around, though, to see what you're pointing at.
Yeah, no, that, all of that area on Stockbridge is Union County unincorporated.
Okay.
But we would be glad to take him in if, if he'd like to annex.
Let him know.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion? I'm sorry. Okay, it wasn't on here, so I didn't do it.
She just went straight to the discussion.
Okay, do I, can we open and close the public hearing or public comments?
We can do all in one motion.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to open and close?
Get a motion to, I give a motion to open and close the, what's it called? What was it? Public hearing. Sorry about that.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, now can I get a, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance 378 regarding annexation number 166.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Now, we need to make a motion to approve the consistency findings for ZM...
No, we're, we're, I think that's...
Let's start with the rezoning request.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. I'm like, I'm falling into your line, man. I make a motion to approve ordinance 378 regarding the annexation, right? 166.
So we've already, we've already approved the annexation. Now we're gonna do the rezoning request and then follow it up with the consistency findings. We did switch that around recently, so.
Go ahead. Do you have any, are we, are we done with that?
Yes, we're good. It's annexed, now we need to zone it.
Okay, zoning map amendment 2, ZM 200220103?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have anything to, to say, or do we just make a motion for that?
I can, you want me to redo my presentation?
What now? Okay, for, for, okay.
But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can I get a motion for number 378?
378, there's...
I make the motion. I make a motion to approve ordinance 1025-2022, number 378 pertaining to petitions, ZM 2022-0103 regarding 5915 Stockbridge Drive.
All in favor? Unanimous. Now for the consistency findings.
I'll make the motion. I make a motion to adopt the statement of consistency as read into the record for petition, ZM 2022-0103 by staff on October 25th, 2022.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Deese.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to old business. Mr. McLam is, there you are. Adam, I hadn't seen you. Did you just sneak in?
I did, sir. I was in class, so. So we are gonna talk about ARPA again this evening for a minute or two. So earlier tonight, on the consent agenda, y'all approved another surplus of food, for Food for Families. We will be delivering that to them tomorrow. If anyone from council would like to come when we're doing that, we're gonna do that about 11 o'clock tomorrow. Just go through a couple of things really quick. One thing that we are gonna do when we get through everything tonight is we'd ask that y'all either approve or deny the water line agreement with Union County. It's been reviewed by staff, by the manager, by the attorney, and also by Union County. It's been agreed upon by all of those. So we're just looking for y'all's approval when we get there for, to allow the town manager to sign that so that we can get that sent back to the county to get that project kicked off. A couple of other things I want to talk about really quick is over the next couple of meetings, y'all will continue to see surplus things on the consent agenda. You will see one more than likely at the next council meeting for a rather large surplus of items. It'll be items for Food for Families, Common Heart, Cameron's House of Hope, Union West Rotary, and the Lions Club. So you'll see a pretty large surplus going to all those different organizations. As we talk about the water lines, and then we'll get to the approval for those. The water line is a 50-50 partnership between the Town of Indian Trail and Union County. Y'all previously agreed that that was something that you wanted to do. It's for the Emerald Woods neighborhood. It'll extend a water line from Lawyer's Road and into the neighborhood that then the residents could tap on to that water line to get off of their wells that are inadequate at this point. So what we'd be looking for is a motion to approve or deny the agreement.
I'll make a motion.
Before we make a motion is, I'd like to give a shout out and a kudos to Councilman McIntyre for reaching, for getting with these people and bringing them to our attention. I know it's, well, water's been well discussed here in Union County, and I'd also like to congratulate the, and thank the staff for working with the Union County staff, and the commissioners agreed to do this. I went down there and shout out to our county commissioners for agreeing to pay half of this, but I think the honor of making this motion ought to go to Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, sir. I'll take that honor. I appreciate that. I'll make a motion to approve the water main extension contract.
All in favor? In unanimous. Brings us to, Adam, the RCI Street Design Change Letter of Support to DOT. That's, that's Mr. Hunsinger.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As you recall, DOT came to the town council meeting September 27th to discuss this design change. And at the end of that presentation, it was discussed between y'all and, and the representative Brett Knite to ask what would DOT need to move forward with public involvement period. And it was a basically a letter of support, and I know the, the manager has been working with DOT to start that process, but we're here tonight to ask for your motion to approve that letter of support so we can get it to DOT. Any questions?
I have a question. Did we ever do anything about maybe having a meeting downstairs or talking about having a meeting?
We're, we're gonna start that once we, they, they receive the letter of support, then they're gonna start moving forward with that process.
All right, good. Okay, no other questions? Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve a letter supporting the, oh, sorry. I make a motion to approve a supporting letter of intent regarding the changes to the RCI street design around the Sun Valley Marketplace area, which were previously approved by council for the Old Monroe Road project and authorized the town manager in conjunction with the town attorney to construct the letter and present it to NC DOT.
All in favor? In unanimous. Mr. McIntyre, did you raise your hand or did?
Yes, I did, sir.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Council.
All right, Mr. Kramer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I come before you, as you know, about two weeks ago. Town Manager McLauren presented some names to you for grand marshal as per our citizen recognition policy. About two weeks later, the next meeting, we come forward, having, you know, y'all have the opportunity to, to review those names. So I'll remind you of the names that were presented from Union West Rotary. And then, as I understand, there was an additional name that was added as well. So State Commander Woods, the honor guard from the VFW, and then Captain James, who's secretly hiding in the hallway over here, was, was also named as someone as well. So those are the three names before you. I can answer any questions, but truly just looking towards your direction for who, who we would like to have as our grand marshal honorary.
Can I get a nomination?
I'll make a motion to appoint Captain Kevin James as our grand marshal.
All in favor? In unanimous.
Perfect. We can come back in here now.
Stop hiding.
Okay, that brings us to new business. Ms. Deese? Permissible open burning amendment ordinance.
No.
We've already done that.
We've already done it, but it's, am I, am I reading the wrong? Yeah. I know you've done it, but I'm just reading it on the, off, off the.
I have ten, a first quarter town finance, Walter Witz.
Is next, first quarter town, town finance report, Mr. Walwitz. Okay, that's all, that's, that's on mine.
Thank you. Good evening. It's good to be in front of you guys again. It's been a while. The next few minutes, I'm gonna take you through the financial position of the town, update you on the first quarterly results, and we'll be back in January with the second quarter. The year's flying by. The first slide, we're gonna talk about general fund revenues. So you see the big part of the pie, about 57% of our revenue comes from our ad valorem tax, and 6% comes from the motor vehicle. So the total of 63% is 18 and a half cents. That's what the 18 and a half cents is factored on. And of that, a nickel of that 18 and a half cents goes right into a debt service capital reserve account. First thing we do is pay our debt, and I'll get to that in a minute. Then the difference is the surplus, which we use for capital projects, and Todd Hunsinger is always looking for that money because we've got a lot of projects going on. So I'll just take you through a couple of few. The ad valorem and motor vehicle tax, we budget at 96%. So it's, it's a little bit over 10 million, but we budgeted only 96% of that. But we collect 99.8%, so right off the bat, Town of Indian Trail, we're plus 300,000 as long as we keep up with our, and the tax receiver is great. They, and they're down there, I was down there today, an older gentleman came in, he had a problem, very patient with him. So we're in really good stead there. Sales tax, 19%. It's a great story here. Union County distributes sales tax on an ad valorem basis. There's 100 counties in North Carolina, 51, 51 of them do it on a per capita, which would be better for us. It's where the biggest town in Union County. But ad valorem, believe it or not, the larger your tax levy, the more sales tax you get. When I first got here, I said, geez, that doesn't make much sense to me, but that's the way it is. Waxaw, 16,000 people gets more sales tax than we do. Never quite understood that. But now by holding our tax rate at 18 and a half cents, thank you for doing that, we're now, and I went over this with Mike earlier, we're now getting between 50 and 70,000 per month more because of our, holding our tax rate. So sales tax is a good thing. We're gonna exceed our budget. Investment income, I'll show you a graph. We're doing great on that. Mike and I spent some time on that, making sure we're in the right account. Interest rates have gone up. Planning, she always brings in above her budget. I'll show you that in a minute. Parks and Rec, we're open, and they're here if you have any questions. Parks and Rec are open and, and he's thriving again as well. And then we have the ABC store. I believe a new store just opened. So we're gonna be, and I know Chairman Cohen, I know that's gonna be a really good news story as well. Next slide, Abby, if we can. So here's how we spend the revenue. So law enforcement, 3.7 million. So we're a very safe town. The only problem I have here is if Captain James retires, how many people do we need to replace him? That's the only problem I have, law enforcement. But you can see a nice chunk is law enforcement. Then sanitation, believe it or not, that went up close to 900,000. Adam leads us through this. It's a, it's a trying time for staff, a lot of phone calls, but Adam's leading us through, as of August of '22, a new contract is in place. We're able to absorb that 900,000 with no impact on the tax. So thank you, Adam, for leading us through that. Town operations, that's the rest. That's the about 44%. Mike, Senior Accountant Gaddy, myself, we meet with every department quarterly to make sure if there's any problems, any issues, we tackle them right then. But most of these department heads, they stay within budget. If there's a problem, we nail it right away. Next, please. Thank you. Fund balance. The fund balance, again, is based on a point in time. Per our audit, we had $31 million in fund balance. Just a quick word about our audit. The order will be sent up to the LGC by the end of October, and North Carolina will review it, so we should be getting the results, and the auditor will come in and make a presentation. Just a word about North Carolina. I'm from New York. North Carolina is fantastic. They watch over it and they run to make sure you're on, your numbers are making sense. New York was the opposite. They just, they couldn't have cared last. They were hammered if they could. I don't feel that way at all with North Carolina. They're really here to support you if there's a problem. So the fund balance is broken down. Our general fund, we have $18 million in unanticipated unavailable money. $18 million, and I'm projecting another $2 million growth this year based on the draft that I've seen. Powell Bill Fund, we have about a $2.5 million fund balance. Engineer Todd told us, I believe in the last meeting, we have a five-year plan at about $15 million. We're gonna tackle those roads. That's gonna come from the Powell Bill. The Powell Bill, we get about $1 million from Raleigh every year. It's based on a formula, population and town roads, a fund balance. We got some grant money. So somehow we're gonna fund $15 million in the next five years, and I'm comfortable with that. Next is stormwater. Council Mayor Pro temp, Barbara, leads that committee. It's a very valuable committee for the town. $4 million fund balance, but I know there's a lot of projects going on there. But it's nice to have that money. Street bond, we have about 1.2 million, and the parks bond, about 1.9 million. Again, it's gotta be used either at Chestnut or Crook Creek, and we're pretty much using it at Chestnut. Everybody knows that project's going one way or the other. Slide four, please. This is our cash balances. Basically, we're blessed to be in the cash position we're in. As of September, we had over $60 million in the bank. September of last year, we had $30 million. So it's been an interesting 12 months, for sure. Basically, we had ARPA money, 12 million came in, led by Adam and Mike. The ARPA committee has worked, I know there's other towns have hired consultants to do the work that Adam and Mike are leading us through. My hometown in Poughkeepsie called me a couple of times. So we're saving a lot of money there. So you see the cash, 23 million in the general fund, strong all the way through, the one in the middle, the 503, some talk about a public works facility in the future. And we're committed to another $2 million after the audit every year. We're gonna try to get that up to $6 million. I don't know how big your office will be, Adam, but. Then we have the SCIF grant funds. The state gave us $10 million, $300,000 last year. We're getting ready to start spending that money. Todd's got that. Underground utilities, street resurfacing, shady buff, a lot of nice things happening there. Talked about Adams. Next slide, please. Debt service. We currently have six outstanding debt instruments. The oldest one will be flowing off in 2025. We purchased the Chestnut Park land and this land in 2010 for $1,750,000. I think it was a good investment at that time. That'll be falling off. Based on our assessed valuation, we're at about 3.87% of our borrowing capacity, which is fantastic. Moody's loves that, and so we're very low debt ridden town. Happy about that. Debt flowing off, our 2019 parks, 1.850 million that's available. And then we had a 2021 borrowing, which we got a rate of 1.53%, 1.506%. $3 million for Old Monroe Road, our commitment. So we have that money sitting in the bank. We're ready to make that payment, and then another 2.8 million for streets. Now this is our first quarter. Again, so let's start at the top. Our taxes ad valorem, 9.4 million budgeted. We've collected about 15%. But don't forget, November and December are the big months. That's when the banks pay, and they could pay up to January 5th without a late charge. So a lot of those big players come in. The sales tax, that represents two months, folks, so we're at 785,000. So I project we'll be breaking through the budget sometime in about seven or eight months through. The rest will all be surplus. Let's see. Take a look at the investment earnings. We got in with a budget of 45,000 because rates were low. You know, I can't take much credit, although Mike and I do talk about this a lot. We're at 115,000 through three months. We're gonna be a half a million dollars ahead of the game by the, by the year end. And then we got, we're waiting for a couple of other things coming in, but ABC store, we're expecting great things there. Next slide, please. Now this is the appropriation. So this is after we met with all the departments. We make sure everybody's in line. Law enforcement, in the middle of the page, we paid our annual sum. This was related to the ARPA. So 3.7 in cash has already gone out. Normally, we pay them quarterly. We pay them a full amount. It was our ARPA strategy. So everybody else is in line. Happy to report, and like I said, we, every quarter we meet. We'll meet again second quarter. I know Mike likes to get involved with all that stuff. Open it up. Mike, you want to add anything or?
Just very briefly, this is a, a big picture view of where we are right now. Next month, we will have some discussions with the council on several projects that you're funding, sharing with you where the money is coming from, the various pots of money, as you can see, and how we're funding that, and what does the future look like. One of the takeaways, I hope, that you picked up from this is that we're in a position that as we do some of these needed projects, that we've talked about, transportation facilities, et cetera, that we're in a strong position to be able to cash flow a lot of that cost, which will, in effect, save the taxpayers' money without having to go to the borrowing market. And the last thing I'll add is, as we go through this, it's, I've been doing this a while. It's complicated on a good day. If you ever have any questions about how all of these numbers fit together, you know, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. We'll pull Jim in and whoever we need to to kind of walk through that.
I'll open it. Any questions?
Any questions?
Can we go back a couple of slides to the debt instruments that we have out? I'll just, one more. Yep. I was just looking at the Old Monroe, original loan of 6 million. I'm trying to really understand that. I know that was a 2021 issue date. The road, we paid $500,000 in cash, coupled with $5 million drawdown, drawdown from the bonds, plus 4 million, so total debt should have been 4.5. Why am I seeing 6? Because we're giving them 5. We're not giving them more than 5. So I was trying to figure where is the 6 million coming from? If there's another bond issue?
No, the 6 million, actually, there was a premium involved, Marcus, but we, we got 4 million for Old Monroe Road. We already reimbursed to town, because we had paid cash the first time.
Right.
So we reimbursed that. So I still have 3 million available for Old Monroe Road.
Yes, but the thing is, the original loan amount, right? We are basically getting 6 million from them.
Yes, we got 6.8 million, actually, because there was a premium involved.
Yeah. You, you may need to, in the, in the subsequent meeting, you may need to touch on that, to really explain that very well, very clear. Because that, it, it, you know, if you look at the, the, the debt service principal and interest at the end, you would come to that amount, right? But that seems to be front loaded. In other words, I would expect to see 5 million there or 4.5, not 6, but we'll, we'll get, we'll get to that at the, another time.
Yeah, but basically, there was a premium involved, and that is a factor of the interest.
Any other questions?
Back to that. Didn't we, didn't we have a couple of installments already? Is that what you're referring to? Two installments, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we made two payments to Old Monroe Road, and we're.
And initially, it was 5 million we were gonna participate with?
Five.
That's the total commitment, 5 million.
But that's just the interest, that 6 million with interest? Is that the 5 million?
But it's in the bank now. 3 million for the Old Monroe Road, and the rest is for streets. So it was, it was a dual purpose loan. So we got about 6.8 million, Marcus, but that money is good for streets, the additional premium money we got. We got a really good interest rate.
Any other questions? Yeah, I have a quick question for you. On the, you know, on the fund balance and with the way the interest rates are going up, what, what kind of interest are, are we starting to make more money on our bank money?
Oh, yeah. Interest rates are really going up, Dave.
What are we, what are we looking at now? That, I mean, and that could make a, a huge difference, too, you know, when you have a nice fund balance and. What are they now and what have they gone up to?
Oh, my God, it's, I think I, I think last month, we got $52,000 in interest income. September of '21, we got less than 2,000. So the rates have gone from .001, I think we got 2.4 last month.
I saw somewhere.
So it's like 24 times.
Some places was given as much as 5%. Is that, is that ludicrous now, or, or is that expectations?
Say that again.
I've seen some banks give five, as much as 5% on, on money. You haven't seen that yet?
I haven't seen that yet.
No, that, okay.
We got 2.4 last month, which is about 25 times higher than we got last September, so.
Good. All right, well, thank you. If there's no more questions, thank you, Jim. That brings up CRTPO surplus funds. Adam?
I'm back again. I'm gonna start this one, and then I may have Todd correct me if I say a couple of things wrong on these funds. So y'all all know the transportation organization up in Charlotte that everybody in the region's a part of. They have funds that become available each year. They have a call for projects with those discretion. They have a call for projects with those discretionary funds. We are looking at putting in a couple of projects this year. One of those projects that you see here in your packet is for EV, potentially EV charging stations, so electric vehicles. The call for projects came out in August 15th of this year. It's open for a couple of months. Applications are due next Friday, I believe, right? Yeah, next Friday. So previously, before coming to y'all, we've had a couple of meetings with them. One of the items we did talk to them about was streetlights on 74. And I know last council meeting, we made a decision on that, but we did talk to them about that, and we just wanted to be open and transparent about that. But the project that we're looking at going to them with now would be EV charging stations. The way that these work is it's an 80/20 match, just like any project with CRTPO. So what we are thinking about for this project is the town's portion of the project would be no more than a hundred thousand dollars for that 80/20 match. That would put electric charging stations at all of our parks, two at each park, with the additional hookups for anywhere from two to 12 additional chargers already pre-conduit and electrical needs there. We would just have to later come back and put the actual unit there. These are future projects, are future dollars. They're not anything that you're allocating the money to tonight. You're just saying that it's a project that you would like to potentially get funded if they could fund it, and you're making the commitment that you would fund it if it was funded. We're looking probably FY '25 for when the funds would become available.
Mike and I talked about this earlier with the EV stations. You know, they're not, electric cars aren't paying road tax at all through our gasoline. Is there a mechanism that we can charge them for charging their cars?
Sure. So there is that mechanism, and that's one thing that we would have to choose, is how we want to do that. The only thing I will say is that when you charge for it, you, it doesn't, you don't recoup the full cost even for the power. It's more of a quality of a service that the town's providing at their parks. You know, if somebody's there for a baseball game or for a soccer game over at Chestnut Square Park, you know, they could put their car there. They could charge it for a couple of hours, and then they would go on about their day. These aren't DC chargers, so they're not fast chargers, so they're not ones that, like, you're gonna see somebody that's driving from the mountains to the beach, and they're stopping one time along the way. That's not what, this is a, they're type two chargers, so it would take anywhere from three to five hours to charge your, most vehicles from empty to full charge.
These are trickle chargers.
Well, so there's, we can get really in the weeds. There's type one chargers that would take all night or 24 hours to charge your vehicle. These are the, those in the middle, which is what all the recommendations are to install right now. One thing that we would do with these is that what we're proposing over at Chestnut would have enough power to do DC chargers in the future if we wanted to. But it would be the only one that we would do that because we have to run a new transformer over there if we do this project.
But you know, you'll have somebody going over there and plugging in, somebody here locally, plug in and, and get free power, so...
So we can recoup some of the cost. You just wouldn't recoup, it's not a dollar for a dollar recoup.
They, they would swipe their card.
Yes.
Yeah. And the person that did that overnight would be required to swipe their card. So you're saying the town would have to invest 20% of the project, or vice versa? We'd do 80%?
We would do 20%. So that would be that not to exceed 100,000. And the reason why I'm saying that is because our estimates are a lot lower than what CRTPO is wanting us to estimate, because they say we're still in the design phase, and they want to make sure that all of their projects are funded if they approve them. They don't want, you know, projects that need to come back to them for additional funding later. You've seen that happen, as you've been sitting up there for the last couple of months, Mayor. So it's one thing that they've started adding contingencies on the front end, but I feel like we're at a point in our design that we're comfortable in our number, but we still have to add that contingency. So I don't even think it would be 100,000, but that's what the number would be using their spreadsheet and their analysis.
Uh, thank you for raising your hand, by the way. Go ahead.
The, uh, you said it's not a dollar for dollar, but, I mean, would our fees over exceed our, cover our costs? Would we maybe get 50%? Is there any estimate on that?
We had, Mike and I had a pretty early conversation with the COGS, so the planning organization for the Charlotte area, and they said the number that they're seeing a lot of is around that 30 to 40% cost recovery.
So basically, is, we're only gonna recoup 30% of our costs, is what you estimate?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Dennis?
And that's, sorry, that's 30% of your power cost, not your, not your investment cost of the 100,000. That's like a dollar, you would recoup 30 cents, something like that.
We don't get any of the installation costs that's not covered.
Correct. Yes, sir.
I just have a lot, I mean, concerns about the electric charging station, the cost of it, and is there gonna be somebody commercially that's doing it? And, I mean, is it really necessary for us to get involved in charging somebody's car who's made a, made a choice to go with an electric car? I just, I still have a lot of reservations about how this whole thing is gonna happen. But I, I do have reservations about us losing money on a proposition because somebody bought an electric car.
So again, it's, I would, I would say it's a total quality of life thing. It, it goes into sustainability. It goes into, do you want options, you know, for people to drive differently? We like muscle cars, or we like pickup trucks, or we like EV cars? And I'm not saying we should subsidize them, that's not what, but I'm just saying, it is a quality of life thing. It's, you know, another amenity that we could offer at our parks, another way to get people to town. I will say, right now, in Union County, I only know of one public electric charging station in the whole county. We have had a couple of, Brandy, I'm looking at you. We've had one developer talk to us about potential charging stations.
Can you hear that? There's some test, or...
Crossroads Ford is gonna be converting to EV cars.
Yes, so some, Ford has said, I think by like 2035, their whole fleet is gonna be EV.
If you want a gasoline or a combustion...
Todd, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Did, uh, I didn't hear, but how many of these are we looking at? One of each park, or we go to one at Town Hall, or?
Yep.
I mean, you know, it's, it's certainly a value. I mean, PNC Bank has one there in Matthews, and, you know, you see them all over, they're popping up, you know, so, you know, I probably never own an electric car myself, as, you know, something about all that weight it's carrying doesn't last long. But anyway, hmm, but how many we're looking at?
Yep, so we're looking at, right now, with this amount, we would look at being, installing two chargers at each location, with the ability at Crossing Pass Park to add, I believe, don't 100% quote me, we would have pre-wired the ability for six more. At Crooked, we would have the ability for 10 more. And at Chestnut, we actually, because we have to run a new transfer, former, we would have the ability eventually there to do as many as 50 if we wanted to.
And just to clarify, we're, we're not gonna exceed 100,000, correct?
That is 100%.
I'm, I'm good with this.
Yeah, one, one other comment, too, is in year 20, was it 2035? All cars will be electric cars. So eventually, you may not, you may not live that long, but, but if you live long enough, you're gonna drive an electric car. Young ladies that sit in here, we're all, lots of, lots of young ladies in the back will also drive electric cars, because that's all we'll have to choose from. So, so it would almost, if you go ahead, I, I bet the cost in 10 years from now is gonna be a whole lot more than what it is now.
And these would have to, the project would have to be awarded by CRTPO. So your, your, your question of 10,000, yes, that would be the most, but for some reason, they may not award the, sorry, 100,000, you are correct, Councilmember Buholic. But it has to be awarded by them first before, you know, we would spend any funds.
When, when do you think they'll make this decision, Adam?
Todd? They'll make the decision...
It, it's not gonna be till the first of next year.
First of next year. January, February next year, they'll make the, the awards of all the projects, and that'll also give us the date for when the project funding would become available. And then we could bring that back to y'all, i- if you choose to award the potential expenditure tonight.
Okay, very good. Can I get a motion from somebody? Who wants to?
Well, I think he had his hand up, so...
I just have a lot, I still have a lot of doubts about this whole electric issue. We don't, I mean, we don't have a power grid that can handle. It's, I mean, this is, you know, speculation that they're gonna do the 2035, because if the power grid can't keep up with it, then they're gonna have to change. So, and, and I still think that somebody that gets an electric car should not be subsidized by the citizens of the town for their power. So I, I, it's something I can't support spending that, that much money on right now, but that's just me.
Thank you.
Again, can I get a motion? Does anybody have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve the request for the town staff to pursue the EV charging stations at the town parks through the CRTPO call for projects funding in an amount not to exceed 100,000, which is 20% of a project cost. CRTPO will, if funded, match the other 80%.
All in favor? Four votes for, denied, with Dennis denying, so McIntyre and Crystal and Todd, all four.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, Todd. Amended CPO number 19, Chestnut Extension Phase Three.
If it's okay, attorney, you tell me if it's, I'd like to switch up and talk about the, the complete street ordinance first, and then the Chestnut Parkway. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Um, because it, this basically, the, the funding swap is based on the fact that we, for this ordinance, is the reason why I want to talk about it. So the Indian Trail Complete Street Ordinance, as you know, we had a, got a contribution from Atrium Hospital Installments. They have impacts to our roadway, and so we worked with them to take their impacts incorporated into this project. And so now that we finally have the money in the bank, we want to incorporate into the ordinance. So if you've looked at your packet and the ordinance, you know, that value is 1.1 million, 374,000. Well, that frees up the street bonds that were designated in that ordinance to be moved into another project. And so when you, when you break down the funding, we had two street bonds. One was for 1.182419, and then we had a street bond 2021 for 250,000. So what we did was pretty much take the 1.3 and put it into the total of those two bonds, which is 1.432419 million, and then made up the difference with general fund, which was a, you know, about 50, 58 or 48,000. So once we did that, and then, of course, we got the state funding, and then, of course, the council chose to use some of that state funding to finance the Duke Energy Underground, which is being currently designed. And so we need to put that in the ordinance as well. And so that, that's what put this train in motion. And so I'm here to get a motion from y'all to approve the ordinance with those changes. Any questions?
Questions? Can I get a motion?
So, sorry, the motion you're asking for, Todd, is for the complete street?
The complete street, yeah, amendment to the complete street ordinance.
So I'm in motion to approve amended CPO number 2020, I'm sorry, number 20 regarding Indian Trail Complete Street.
All in favor? Unanimous?
All right, so I'm gonna try to explain this as best I can. All right, so now we're at the ordinance for our Chestnut Extension. So this ordinance is of two projects. One was the Chestnut Parkway Phase 1B, which is the leg that's between Lemon Drive and Highway 74 in front of the apartments. That was started with this ordinance, and then funds, funds were used up, and that's the three you saw at the beginning of the ordinance in the initial CPO 237. So we've been adding to this ordinance since, once Chestnut Parkway Phase 3 was approved by the council to move forward with in the design phase. And so now, we've had to do another amendment of that because of the amendment we did with the complete street ordinance we just, that you just approved. So what we did was, those street bonds now we freed up because of Atrium's contribution to the complete street project, can be moved over to this project, because this project right currently was funded just through general fund and capital reserve, and there's no contribution with CRTPO. This is a fully town-funded project. So obviously, the thought process at the time was to move those funds to help out with some of the financing. Well, we, we'd hope to that have some savings in the general fund for that, but unfortunately, costs have went up, and I've kind of talked about this two council meetings ago, that, you know, this project's pretty much doubled in construction dollars. And so when you see the breakdown in the memo packet, we finally got a accurate cost for right of way. And so I've never went back to y'all and asked for more money right of way, because I didn't want to guess. And so we finally got hard numbers, and so now we're coming to you for an additional 600,000. And then the construction dollars went up double, just because this is the time we're living in right now with construction. And then, of course, you approved last meeting to do the additional temporary tie-in of Old Monroe, which was an additional 250,000, which is included in that construction cost you see on your spreadsheet at the, in the memo. So once that's done, was done, Jim found an additional funding through our street bond 2021 to add to the project to help for that funding increase. And we also had to add a little bit more general fund dollars to make up the difference. And so I'm here to free, get a motion from y'all to approve that funding change in order to move forward with the project and the right of way. Any questions?
Yeah, so you're, you said, you, you mentioned right of way. The right of way is gonna be a separate item down below 10F, right? Is that what we are?
No, no, we, we're having to approve the increase with the ordinance first of all. We can approve, approve the actually purchasing right of way, which is the next one.
So what you're really asking for is, what's the, I, I tried to look at the package, trying to get an understanding. What's the dollar amount you're asking for, for the, the amended CPO for Chestnut Extension Phase 3?
The increase would be, let's see...
Six hundred thousand?
It's, yeah, so well, the, the construction cost is 650,000, 600, sorry, 6 million, 50,000. And the increase with the right of way was 750,000. So that's a net difference of 2, 2,816,890 and 600,000, if you add those together.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Again, I was trying to make this as simple as possible.
As clear as mud.
If there's no more questions, somebody want to give a motion?
I'll make a motion, yeah. I make a motion to approve the amended CPO number 19 regarding Chestnut Extension Phase 3.
All in favor? Unanimous? Take Todd's last one.
All right, so now that we've got the additional funds for that project for right of way, we have finally reconciled with two property owners for their parcels. And as you saw in the packet, the, the area and the parcel numbers and the value. So what we're coming to you as staff tonight is approval to purchase right of way property, I mean, property, we're asking you to purchase property for right of way of the Chestnut Parkway Phase 3, which amounts to parcel 0, 07114041 and 07114041B together at 146,264.61. And then the third parcel would be 07114041C at a value of 75,657.34. And this are, these are two of the, three of the major parcels as far as purchasing. We do have two more with the DOT. Again, come to y'all, next council meeting, to talk about the DOT and how they helped us with two other parcels on the other end. So I'd like to have a motion to approve those two amounts.
Any questions? Can I get a motion?
How much is the extra amount?
Beyond this?
Well, you said you approved the extra amount, so what's the extra amount?
Oh, the extra amount is what, what we just approved with the CIP, that extra 650,000. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So once we come back to y'all with the rest of the parcels, it'll all pretty much add up to 650,000 as the total cost of the right of way for the Parkway.
Mr. Don, say.
Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the right-of-way for Chestnut Parkway Phase Three, specifically parcels zero-seven-one-one-four-zero-four-one, zero-seven-one-one-four-zero-four-one B, as in Boy, and zero-seven-one-one-four-zero-four-one C, as in Charlie, not to exceed an amount of two hundred and twenty-one dollars, sorry, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-five cents.
All in favor? unanimous?
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Todd? That brings us to the manager's update.
Okay, you have the memo that went out with the agenda package. We're probably halfway through with our watershed study, which was approved in April. Uh, that's a thirteen-month study. They'll be bringing back recommendations. We've also did the online survey, which we received about four hundred-plus responses. There was a workshop held on stormwater. We had a fairly light attendance on that. So stay tuned for more to come. Next month, Brandy will be giving you an update on your downtown master plan, which is scheduled to be approved in, uh, January of twenty-twenty-three. We've talked a lot about Indian Trail Complete Street, both Phase One, which is our center section, uh, Phase Two, which are the outer ends, and where you're still doing work on Navajo Drive. Um, they're still doing the design work over at Chestnut Square Park. We'll have a, have an ordinance for you at your next meeting on that. And then once we get the design, they will then do the cost, we'll do the bid. You get to approve all of that. I think that will be a, a nice, uh, addition to that park, and it will, it will allow us to add more opportunities, more parking, more recreational opportunities. I think it'll be something you're proud of. Also, in December, uh, expect to see some generator bids for both the sheriff's office facility and for Town Hall. You'll recall, we had to get it specked out. When they built the building, they didn't spec out the electric for a generator, so we had to go back and do some work on that. Uh, right now, we're only scheduled to have one month, one meeting in November, one in December. So as we start to wrap up the year, we'll try to move these items along. Um, I think many of you know this. CSX has told me them, their, CSX representative has reported that they've got all the material for the train crossing with the exception of the concrete pads, which must be custom-built. That was a week ago. They expect to have that done in the next two to three weeks. Uh, we made them aware of when the Christmas parade will be coming through. As soon as we know something, we will let you know something. Uh, we are also talking to the developer about the big dip in the road at South Fork and Indian Trail Road, and we've basically told them, if they can't get out and fix it, then we'll do it ourselves and send them a bill. But I understand through Todd that they are talking to someone that's gonna do it right. So we appreciate the patience that our taxpayers have had on Indian Trail Road. It's been a pain for everyone, including myself, but we're gonna get to the finish line. Um, at our next meeting, we'll, as I mentioned earlier, we'll have some further discussion on some of our projects that we've got, how they're funded. As you've seen tonight, this is a, a complex project of moving money from this bucket to that bucket to doing that. We're also dealing with increasing cost in construction, so we have to be on our, our A-game to make sure that we leverage the resources that the town has provided us. Uh, I mentioned earlier, we'll have an ordinance on Chestnut Square Park. We'll also give you an update on NC DOT highway maintenance. We received some information from them, um, a day or so ago, and we, Adam and I have not had a chance to really evaluate that and see if it's something we want to get into. And, uh, I have already mentioned the master plan update, and with that, I am finished, unless y'all have any questions.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Oh, just wanna give a shout-out to you and Adam, and they replaced that light pole on Park Road beside the Presbyterian Church Fellowship Hall, so it's not, there's not a leaning pole there no more. Um, I'll have to give a thank you to our grounds crew chairman, Mr. Rogers at the Presbyterian Church for bringing it to our-
Please convey to Mr. Ro-, uh, Mr. Rogers our appreciation and thank him for being a good citizen, keeping us in the loop on it.
He's in the choir at the church. He's a nice guy.
Good deal. I'm sure he is.
Thank you, Mr. McLaurin. That brings us to council comments.
Councilmember Amburgi?
Um, happy birthday, belated birthday to Mayor Cohen. His birthday was yesterday. Happy birthday, sir.
Thank you.
And, uh, welcome to the exchange students back there from Italy and Brazil. And I've learned today that you don't speak Spanish in Brazil. It's Portuguese. Um, but they're lovely ladies, and we're glad you're here. I hope you wasn't too bored with all our antics tonight. Um, welcome to all the new hires. The town's hired those four individuals. I met Nick at the Spooktacular, I believe, or it may have been here. But, um, great, great young man. And I spoke to, what's her name? Haley. Yeah, Haley, I was, um, she didn't recognize me. She didn't know who I was. She was sitting in the window over there last Friday, I believe. Um, but, uh, the staff did a great job. Spooktacular, kids, man, I was walking down through where the kids were playing, and, uh, they weren't worried about waiting in line. It was a great event. And, uh, congra- congratulations, Captain James, on being our grand marshal man. It came to fruition.
Fruition. Prudition.
God bless everyone. Have a good night.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Uh, thank you. Um, wanna welcome Haley, Nick, Caleb, and Christian to the town. Hopefully, they'll have a long-lasting career here. Um, Todd Hudson, I wanna call you out a bit, um, for your work with the NC DOT on the various road, road projects that we have. Um, I know a lot of our citizens do talk about the roads, but we have over thirty-something million dollars in funded projects throughout the town. Um, some of them have not gotten off the ground yet. They're still in the plan and design right-of-way stages, but I wanna say thank you to you, um, for that. I know tonight, within the consent agenda, we approved five hundred thousand dollars to go, to go towards street resurfacing. I think that's gonna really help, um, with the roads in the town and continue every year thereafter, um, just getting our roads up to eighty percent. Um, wanna also thank the council for, um, your support for these residents in town within the Emerald Woods area for approving the agreement with the county for the water lines. This is really important. Um, for me personally, I think, you know, water is essential for life. Um, without water, there can be no life. So helping these people get off the wells and onto, hopefully tapping into the county lines, I do, you know, I do so, um, appreciate your support on that. Um, there's a rabies clinic on Saturday, as Captain James mentioned, Union Prep, Saturday twenty-ninth, from nine to one or nine to twelve, somewhere around there. If you show up at nine, you're definitely gonna get, you know, your, your pet, the rabies shot. Um, with that being said, everybody have a good weekend, and, uh, God bless.
Mayor Pretend Barber?
Uh, like to say, welcome to the new people. Welcome aboard. Glad to have you. Uh, congratulations on grand marshal. It's certainly a well-deserved honor for Captain James. Uh, happy birthday to David Cohen yesterday. Um, just, uh, like to remind everybody that First Baptist of Indian Trail has a family fest October thirtieth from five to seven. Uh, there's also on October twenty-ninth, this Saturday, there's a fall festival at Valley Church off Rogers Road. And other than that, everybody have a blessed evening, and I hope you have a happy and safe Halloween.
Councilmember Gay?
Thing's pretty much been covered, so I wanna thank everybody who's taken their time to come out tonight and, um, participate in our meeting. And if you have friends and family that'd like to learn more about the town, I hope you'll encourage them to come over and, and, uh, see what we do here. I hope everybody has a safe trip home, and, um, thank you very much again for coming.
Councilmember Buaholic?
Like Dennis said, I think everybody was saying stuff. I was marking it off, so I don't repeat everything, but happy birthday, David. Um, thank y'all for coming, and just drive safe home.
Mayor Cohen?
Yeah, I was waiting for you to say that.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. And again, welcome, welcome new hires, all of you. Nick, Haley, Christian, who am I leaving out?
Caleb.
Caleb?
Caleb.
Caleb. Uh, I hope you're here for many years. Uh, it's a great place to work. It really is. They're good people. Uh, and, uh, thank you, everybody, for coming out. Captain James, thank you. You did well-deserved honor. And if they'd have saw you cooking hot dogs the other day, they'd, they'd agree with me that, uh, that, uh, and I still, I say this all the time, I'm amazed at, uh, what all volunteer worker, work that the town staff does and the clubs do. And, uh, I think we live in one of the best places that, uh, we can live. And I'm proud to be, uh, an Indian Trail resident, and, uh, I'm proud to share this town with, with all of you. And that being said, uh, God bless everybody. Do I have a, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?